That's really loud.
The squeaky wheel. I'd like to call this regular city council meeting in January. Consider to order, please call a roll.
Kuz?
Here.
Zingy?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Gage?
Here.
Kifer?
Here.
Please rise politely.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Communications, we have a packet laid on the table for us, a calendar and a letter written by Mr. Dean Lenzin to the city council. Bring this down to persons to be heard. Joey?
Hi, many of you guys know me in the community. I am part of the substance abuse task force. I'm also case worker for public assistance, previously worked for the police department. And the reason I'm here today is because for the last, I don't know, let's see, 2011 is when I started being concerned about Peace Health and the services that they have provided our community. And, I mean, we all want good health care. We all deserve good health care. We're a small community unfortunately, and you know, obviously pricing and that sort of thing, you know, tends to determine whether a person should be seen by a health provider. And so the reason I'm here today is because I understand that you guys will be renewing the contract possibly in 2023. And my hope is that you'll put out a request or proposal for other hospital providers or healthcare providers for our town because I feel that our community members deserve to live. They deserve to stay in their communities. I'm gonna tell you three short stories about three family members of mine that have passed away under the care of Peace Health. Trying not, it's taken me a long time to get here. It really has. So I thought about just writing you guys and I just thought, if you see my face, you see I'm a member of the community, I'm active in the community, I care about this community. So it's really important to me. In 2011, well, 2010, my grandfather had suffered a stroke in February and he had gone to Peace Health. And at the time, they diagnosed him with vertigo, sent him home. On August of 2010, he was disoriented and was taken to the emergency room and again, they were, you know, assuming it was his vertigo. Dr. Anthis thankfully ordered up an MRI and found scar tissue and saw that my grandfather had been suffering strokes. Never once had an MRI been ordered for him. Anyhow, so he was put into the hospital and he was a flight risk because he just wanted to go home, you know, and the hospital forgot to put the alarm on the bed because he was a flight risk. And so in the middle of the night, he got up because he had to go to the bathroom. My grandfather's name is Charles King, by the way, and he lived eight mile refuge cove. Anyhow, he got up to go to the bathroom and he couldn't make it and he urinated on the floor. He slipped and fell and smacked his head and they had to medevac him out. When my aunt went to get the nurse from the nurses station, she was sleeping because obviously we're very short staffed with good nurses, you know, enough people to cover shifts. They medevac him out. He went to Peace Health Bellingham. They put a couple stents in his head and then we were just gonna discharge him and they said there was no room at the hospital for him to go. And my grandmother couldn't take care of him. And so of course, my aunt contacted the hospital and said, you're going to make room for him because you're the reason that he went down there. And miraculously, they found a bed for him and built my grandfather a driveway because there was threat of a lawsuit. So he got a driveway for the ambulance to get him home at some point, but he never made it home. Then fast forward to August of 2017. My grandmother, his wife, she drinks, that's common knowledge in this town, that my grandmother drank. But she stayed home, she never hurt anybody. But every time that she's ever gone to the doctor, they've accused her of being drunk all the time. Yeah, obviously. But she was telling them she had been having fainting spells and they chalked it up that she was a drunk. Well, she fell and broke her femur in August of 2017 and which left us family members to care for her. We all took shifts to take care of her. She had a metal plate put in her femur. They had medevac her south to Peace Health Bellingham. They noticed that she had low potassium. So they cut her fluids in half, gave her potassium pills and we were taking her vitals and everything and get her back. And we're assisting her to the bathroom and she's using a walker and whatnot. And she starts fainting again. And they can't figure out what's wrong with her. And so by this time, she's bedridden and she can't get up and we're putting her in diapers and we're taking care of her there in her bed. They finally figured it out by putting one of those little heart monitors on it that they ordered out of California. They put it on her, they read, they had to ship it down to read it. Well, she had an arrhythmia on her heart and never once was it checked. So there was that. Well, come January, she was gonna get a pacer put in for her arrhythmia and she died on the table in Bellingham. Now, trying really hard to control myself because this last one was my mom.
Take your time.
My mom was 64 years old and she was a chronic smoker. She smoked two and a half packs of cigarettes a day. She had pancreatitis, a brain tumor, and diabetes. She was 97 pounds. When she was under the care of Dr. Anthis, he did a really good job with her for years, but obviously Dr. Anthis suffered his own medical issues and she had to go elsewhere. There were times that she would be in immense pain and she would go to the ER because she would have a pancreatic attack. And she would be accused of being a drug seeker. They asked her when she had her last drink was. My mom hadn't drank in like 25 years. And they treated her like she was, they, she was angry with them for treating her that way. And so, you know, every time she would go to the doctor, every three months for her medication checks, they, all they would do is shut her up and give her more pain meds. Which is why I feel really passionate about substance abuse in this town because I feel part of it is the provider's faults. You know, I mean, my mom became medically addicted to pain meds because she was in pain and her pancreas only works sometimes to process food. So it only works sometimes to process medication. So anyhow, my mom, again, I said, she went every three months and she saw these, she was forced to see Peace Health because she needed to see a real doctor and not a nurse practitioner or clinic. She had to go there. I ordered up her medical records after she passed and I'll get to that in a minute. But anyhow, so what happened was, was my mom's teeth were rotting, all of them were rotting at the bottom. And that's, you know, due to the diabetes, lack of calcium, and with the pain med cocktails that were going on, they were rotting her teeth. Her insurance wouldn't cover it. She had retired state insurance that didn't cover dental. And I pushed really hard because my degree's in healthcare administration. And I said, Mom, if it's a medical necessity, you could get, you know, Dr. Collier Brown to write it up. And she's like, no, she thinks I'm a drug seeker, blah, blah, blah. And it got to that point where I was just like, I'll pull them out myself. That is a sign of a heart issue. When you have your teeth are rotting, I mean, that is a plaque buildup, everything. That's just one part of it. Anyhow, my mom's been having pains in her arms for years, shooting pains up her arms. Well, on May 27th, went and had breakfast at their house and talked to her again about getting the oral surgeon to remove her bottom teeth and that, you know, it was a sign of a heart issue. I was sure of it. And I'm no doctor, but I will tell you, I am familiar with healthcare because I've worked in healthcare. I have approximately six years' experience in healthcare, maybe on administrative level, but I have worked with neurologists. I worked at the state neurologist in Seattle. I mean, I'm familiar with healthcare. Anyhow, well, we all left and did our thing and my mom was walking up the stairs to her room and she got all numb in her neck and her face. And she tried to call me and unfortunately, cruise ship time and I was downtown, I never got her call. The call never came through to me. Thankfully, my other aunt had texted me and said, you need to call me. I called her, she said, we're at the ER right now. Don't freak out. But your mom, something's wrong with your mom. So I go get my brothers out, my brother and my dad out of the movie theater. They were watching a movie and I, I didn't care. I went in there and got them. And they medevac her to Peace Health. At Peace Health, I recorded what the doctor told me about her. There was three doctors and they all talked for 10 minutes with all of us. And they talked about a bypass. My mom had 90 to 100% arteries clogged in every one of her chambers. And they, my mom being 97 pounds, the odds of her surviving a bypass were very, very slim. They said to us, one in a million. So anyhow, I, I didn't leave my mom's side the whole time. I mean, I, I didn't even go to the bathroom till after she passed. That was 40 hours. But while we were in there, they were short staffed yet again. There was only two nurses on the whole floor. And why they sent her there, it's just common for Peace Health to send them to their hospitals. They wouldn't tell me who the other doctor experts were that felt that my mom wasn't going to survive. They wouldn't tell me which hospitals. They just said they talked to some experts. What happened was, was they doped my mom up with a bunch of morphine so she would be comfortable to determine whether or not she was gonna have a bypass. Her and my dad were in with a doctor and a social worker and they asked my mom if she wanted to live. My dad started to answer for her because she's doped up on morphine. She's totally lucrative. And they said, Mr. Reeves, she needs to answer. And my mom says, well, I guess so. I don't really wanna get cut, but if that's what's gotta happen. They looked right at her and said, you don't wanna fight for your life. We're not doing it. We're not going to do it. So my dad called me in and he said, your mom's gonna die today. This was on the 29th. And I looked at my mom and I said, Mom, I know you said you didn't wanna be in pain anymore. And she said, I just want it to stop hurting. So they assured us that it would be a painless process. The last hour of my mom's life, she kept saying she was hurting, she was in pain, then it needed to stop and then it wasn't working. She had wet herself and I went to get a nurse and they said they'd be with me and it took them an hour. I changed her bedding myself. She sat in her own urine. So anyhow, after that, realized that my grandmother had died three doors down from my mom. And we left the hospital and we have been repairing the family ever since, but I ordered up all of her medical records. And I just, I haven't been able to sit down with a highlighter and highlight all the times that she told them and the dates, which is what I wanted to present to you today. But because it's been so hard for me, because I've been really trying to separate my emotion from the reality of poor quality healthcare we have in this town. In 2015, just opened it up, she says that her arms are shooting pains up both sides and she's got pain in her shoulders. They diagnosed her with shoulder bursitis, upped her pain meds and sent her home. I'm sorry, but if you have so many organs malfunctioning, your pancreas, you got diabetes, you have a brain tumor, your body's a circulatory system. If there's one organ that's failing, why are you not checking the heart where all of this stuff is generated through? Now, I would like to say that maybe we should give them a chance to have training and recertifier or something, you know, even talk with the joint commission on, on how they get their accreditation. I would love to say that, but I don't want anybody else to die. I don't even go there anymore. I'm going to Juneau on the 18th for a regular checkup because I would rather spend my dollars there than walk into a hospital that's murdered three of my family members. Now, I'm not saying that they didn't contribute to their health demise, but it's just common sense. And all they wanted to do was shut her up and, and send her home, you know. And you're supposed to treat it as an incident, not the person. So whether you have a personal vendetta against somebody or whatever, they're incidents. They're people. They're not a number. And I feel that it's really important that we have quality healthcare. And the problem is with all of it is, the more people like me that are leaving because we fear that hospital, the less dollars that are staying in this town to build our economic growth. It's extremely important for us to survive in our community without fear of a healthcare provider being negligent and ignoring the needs of the patient. It's, I want our community to thrive and I think it's really super, super important that each, I'm sure every single one of these people in this room have a story about something Peace Health did. I, I'm positive of it because every person I've talked to has told me some horrific story. I mean, even, I had a gallbladder attack. I thought I was dying of a heart attack and I went into Peace Health Emergency Room in March and they, they give me an ultrasound and then I go to see the general surgeon. He didn't even tell me what was wrong with me. You know what he said was, he said, well, we can cut it out next Wednesday on the 28th. Are you free? And I said, cut what out? Oh, you got a sack of rocks inside you is what he says. I said, whoa, easy trigger. I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go talk to my insurance company. I'm gonna build up my own leave. And guess what? My insurance company covered my trip to Seattle 100%. They paid first class ticket for me and a companion. They paid per diem for me $50 a day, $50 for my companion. They paid for my lodging and they paid 100% to have my gallbladder removed. And it was still only a third of the cost that Peace Health charges here. The fact that I'm leaving and I fear healthcare in my own town, and, and I know that my mom was medically addicted to pain meds because nobody wanted to find out what was wrong with her. They just wanted her to be quiet and stay high. And, and then she died at 64 years old. Nobody should be dying at 64 years old. I mean, that's like the new 40, right? So I just, I don't, I just want you guys to consider anybody else because I don't wanna have to wait for training and more people die. I really don't. I'm really tired of it and I really don't want my kids to be put in a situation. When I got back here, I went to Blake Chupka and had my health directives done. And in it, I specified, if I am incapacitated due to substances, the choice of my life is not made by the doctor, but by my kids who are gonna do research about what my diagnosis is and what the mortality rate is. It's sad that I had to run back here as soon as possible and make sure that Peace Health has a copy in case for some reason people bring me there. I don't want it to be that way. And I know you guys don't. So I mean, at least take that into consideration. And I really appreciate you giving me an opportunity to talk tonight. You have no idea how much I love the people in this community and how much I, I want us to thrive, not just be alive, but to build our economic growth. I want to create jobs. I mean, you saw me here last year being Uber, you know? I mean, of course, I was desperate for money, but I wanted to make sure that other people had opportunity to survive here too. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My apologies for my emotions.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that hasn't signed up that wishes to speak tonight? Thank you. So that moves us on to consent agenda. I have nothing to add as most of those items take some action. So I have a motion for consent?
Senator.
You move in second. Any discussion? Please read the items.
Approve of the minutes, regular city council meeting in December 6th through 20th, 2018, and special city council meetings of December 3rd and 10th, 2018. Resolution number 192722, adopting the alternative allocation method for the FY19 shared fisheries business tax program, Fisheries Management Area 19, Southern Southeast. Ordinance number 191891, adding new section 13.09.040 to the Ketchikan Municipal Code entitled, Program for Performing Arts, first reading. Liquor, a license renewal for Dwyers, a crab and fish company, exempting the procurement of annual core network infrastructure maintenance and support for the telecommunications division from competitive bidding and quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, extreme networks formerly brocade, exempting the procurement of the annual Broadworks IP phone switch professional engineering maintenance and support for the telecommunications division from competitive bidding and quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, ECG Inc., exempting the procurement of video transport services for the telecommunications division from the competitive bidding and quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, GCI, and exempting procurement of interim service administration and engineering services for the telecommunications divisions from the competitive written bidding, bidding, quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, JPM Consulting.
Thank you. Carl, if you would, there's four in a row here and I just think for the general public, it would be good for them to know why we exempt this. And maybe Ed could speak to that for you. I understand that it's because these are proprietary type operations and we're, you know, working with their equipment. I just wanted to make sure the general public knew why some of this stuff gets exempted.
The first three items on the KPU consent agenda, Mr. Mayor, all relate to annual maintenance and support of proprietary systems as you described. And there are no other providers. The fourth one goes back to the fact that we have yet to fill the engineering positions and we're having to go out and hire professional people to do the task that we otherwise would be doing in-house. In this particular case, this is JPM Consulting. He actually is a former employee of the telephone division. He's on his own company now, providing these type of services. Ed, do you wanna add anything to that?
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that people understand why we do some of this stuff and exempt it.
Is there any question? Please call a roll.
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Thank you. That brings us down to new business. Item 7A1, budget transfer of Alaska Municipal League online municipal sales tax.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move the city council approve a donation to the Alaska Municipal League in the amount determined appropriate by the city council in support of the Alaska Municipal League's efforts to administer a statewide online sales tax program and authorize a budget transfer, transfer in a comparable amount from appropriated reserves of the general fund to the city council's community promotion account number 610.01.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And then move in second. Do you think?
Yeah, so AML has decided that we, well, they found out we, we received, what is it, 12 million in retail taxes? And if we can capture some of those taxes from online vendors like Amazon, right? That's what I understand it's to be. It's, they're, they're working at it. It's gonna take some money and our portion is 7,500 to 10,000 is what I understand. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I would suggest 7,500. Because I think it's a good thing to do. I think we need to capture it if we can. And it's good to see someone has started the process of doing that. I mean, I like Amazon as much as the next person, but we need to capture those taxes we're missing out on.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, we're at municipal league meeting. This was a big topic. And there was a couple presentations in regards to this. And so they've tested themselves with working on this and hopefully to bring forth the legislation. I think they're gonna be talking again about it in fall session in Juneau. So.
Did they, I don't remember, did they say what, how long it was gonna possibly be before they could?
I think they said it would take them a year probably to work out the details because every city and every community that has a sales tax has to be similar on the rules. It has to be a statewide rule base. It can't be city by city as to what is exempt and what's not exempt and blah, blah, blah. Then they figured it would take a year to iron everybody's differences out, get it down to where everybody can agree along.
And then it would be divvied up and then divvied up by communities?
I don't know how to, I think once it's done, I, I don't know the details of that.
I think that's still something that has to be worked out and how that will be collected and how it be dispersed from what I understand. Anybody else?
Judy?
And the amendment to.
So is 7,500, that's all it's gonna cost? Or will it be coming back in the year? Like, is there a cap?
I don't think that was spelled out. They did some kind of formula to try to figure out how to collect enough funds so they can get the job done and whether this is gonna get it done or not, depending how much to work, how complicated the work get.
And the, the project is scheduled to be $100,000, right?
Yeah.
And we're.
And that's all there?
I didn't think they had much difficulty when they take it to the House or the Senate. They didn't see that as an issue. Most people are in agreement. It's just putting it together.
So the motion is to support them in their efforts to bring this forward and what they're getting, the laws in place and regulations set so that they can impose this tax probably on a state level in a dispersment manner. So the suggestion is 7,500?
I have a reason behind that.
Okay.
It's because they say if you make 10 to 25 million dollars, it's 7,500 to 10,000, but that's, that's a big stretch. And since we only make 12,000, I think the. And since we only make twelve thousand, I think the minimum is sufficient.
Okay. Anybody else? Are you in that? Please call the roll.
Kifer?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kuz? Yes.
Thank you. That passes. Brings us down to item seven A two, City Ketchikan Flag. This was brought forward by Councilmember Bergeron. Any interest in bringing the motion forward?
We want to save this until he's back, Your Honor.
We can do that. We can defer it to a later date.
Yeah, unless anybody wants to do that. I'd beg for a way to...
Four hands for deferring this and move it to another...
Yeah, I have a question.
Oh, you have a question? Yeah.
I just wondered if he's excused tonight? Did he say why he's not here?
He got a count.
He's at town.
He has said he will be.
Yeah, he said last time he was going, I said, where have you? He was going somewhere fun.
Okay.
To take care of his animals.
So, we'll defer that until later at the end. Bring this to item seven A three, approved contract number nineteen dash oh-two, consulting services for the lease of the Ketchikan Medical Center, ECG Management Consultants.
Your Honor?
Yes, go ahead, Dick.
I move the city council authorize the city manager to enter into a contract number nineteen oh-two, consulting services for the lease of the Ketchikan Medical Center between the city of Ketchikan and ECG Management Consultants in the amount of not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars, approving funding from the Public Health Department's two thousand nineteen healthcare operations management and consulting services account, number six forty-point-oh-four, and direct the city manager to execute the contract documents on behalf of the city council.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Dick?
No, I, we've talked about this for a while now. And I think it's the best thing to do. The young lady that spoke a while ago gave us another reason to take a look at this and see what happens. Whether it's them or someone else, services have got to be improved. And these folks should help us do it.
Anybody else?
I've, I've got something.
Yeah.
I sent a message to the two main gentlemen at the beginning of the week. I'm trying to get to their names right now. Dan Merino and Kevin Kennedy. And I didn't receive a response back from either one of them. I just wanted to know where or who, I wanted to know who on their team was working for Peace Health currently and where the location was. I didn't even know if they could tell me. I just sent them each an email. And I received a response from Dan saying that he was going to be out of the office until yesterday and that he would get back as soon as possible. And no response from Kevin, which you never know about emails. It could have gone into cyberspace. But I really wanted those questions answered. And looking at the scope of work, it's not exactly what I expected. And one of their consultants gets six hundred and ten dollars an hour. Their typographic secretary gets a hundred and twenty dollars an hour. And for that money, and they're already in, in a contract with Peace Health. I just don't like it, so I'm going to be voting no. I think it's a conflict.
Thank you. And I'd like to make sure that the council member, if you have questions for a contractor, a contractor we're proposing with, best option would be to run those through the manager's or clerk's office so we have a consistent record of the, rather than do it through a perfectly emailed situation.
Thank you. I will remember that in the future. I knew because of the holidays, I probably should have gone through Earl first. But those, those two gentlemen did tell us they're available for questions if we want to ask them questions. And because of the holidays, I figured I would send them an important noted email. But I will remember that in the future, Mayor.
So, Carl, they did answer back in regards to some of the concerns about conflict.
They did, Mr. Mayor. And I did hear from Mr. Merino today in response to Councilmember Isom's inquiries, which then prompted me to have some discussion with Ron Saxton, the attorney for Peace Health, relative to how this was coming down. Because he was telling me one thing. ECG was telling me something different. The two didn't mesh. And I don't think everybody knew within both organizations exactly what is going on. But I can tell you tonight with certainty that no one working on the Ketchikan project relative to ECG will be working on the Peace Health project that they're working on down in the Washington area. And Peace Health went as far as saying if we had a concern that we didn't want Peace Health doing work down in Washington and Oregon using ECG, they would back off from that. But I didn't feel that was necessary. I feel that the assurances that we've got and the barriers that they've constructed with inside the company makes me comfortable enough where ECG can do the work without a conflict of interest.
Yes.
To clarify now, the other memo that came out to us that you just stated at some point also indicated that they're doing work for Search. And Search could very well be part of this process. And did I read that correctly? That if, if Search becomes part of the process and Mr. Kennedy will no longer be working for us? Was that the, I got, that was the impression I had.
Lacey, do you want to come up and respond to that one?
Lacey Simpson, Assistant City Manager. That is correct, Councilmember Kifer, that Kevin Kennedy is the lead on the Search project with ECG currently. But if the council decides to move forward with exploring alternate providers, Search perhaps being one of those providers, Kevin Kennedy would no longer be a part of the Ketchikan project.
So...
I'm sorry. So, I guess my follow-up to that is how, isn't that going to push our process back then? As, as they get someone else involved and up to speed and everything else? Or what's happening? I don't know how this works. It just seems odd that we'd be our main guy and all of a sudden, he's gone and halfway through the process.
Sure. It's, it's absolutely a concern. I wouldn't say that Kevin is our main guy. I think Dan is more, more than likely our main guy. And Kevin will be assisting with this project as well as assisting with the Search project. It's certainly a concern. It seems a little premature to be thinking that's sort of task three and the tasks, I think, four tasks that are outlined at this point in time. So, it's, it's worth hav, yeah, absolutely. It's worth having the conversation.
So, before you take off, Lacey, is that maybe because they're looking at possibly applying for an, if we were to put it out on our F? Is it because, like, people, these organizations like Search actually looking at it as an opportunity? Or...
Is Search looking at Ketchikan as a potential opportunity?
Would that be why they would be looking at more? Because they've, they used this organization already to do SITCA. So, I'm just curious of the fact that we've gone into this, looking at the services for looking at a provider and renewing a contract, if maybe now we have other organizations going, hey, Ketchikan might be open for. And they're looking at...
If I could respond to that. To follow up on what Lacey said, I think we're going to know well in advance of us getting to a stage where we're thinking of putting out an RFP, whether there's going to be a conflict with ECG. I have a meeting tomorrow with Search. And they have asked to come down to make a, you know, introductory session to Ketchikan. You know, it's no secret what we're doing. And they're aware that we are evaluating our options. And I will make it clear to them, just like I have made it clear to Peace Health, that if I see the potential of conflicts, we're going to want to be able to work with them cooperatively and remove those conflicts from us and, and the path that we want to follow. At this point, I don't see it as an issue.
Julie?
I, I'm going to vote no, because I disagree. I see it as a conflict because, and this I didn't know. I just found out that Kevin Kennedy will be on the Search end of it also. So, these two gentlemen and whoever else, they're going to analyze the current Peace Health contract and what they offer us and look for voids, look for what the community is wanting, what we're not getting. And part of their team is with Search. And another part of the team who doesn't have anything to do with this is with Peace Health. I, I think it's obviously a conflict now, especially with Kevin Kennedy saying he's with the Search contract. Why don't they just take him off of ours? Why don't they just put somebody else on ours then?
We, we haven't had that discussion with ECG. If that's something that the council wants us to do, we certainly can. What I would tell you, Councilmember Isom, is exactly what I told Ron Saxton of Peace Health today, who, Peace Health is very anxious to get these discussions going. And I, I understand that. If, if the council has concerns with ECG and, and you want us to say, we're going to stop here and start again, we can do that. That, that's not an issue. But I will tell you, it will probably be December of this year before we have somebody in place. With the other projects we have going and to go out and put out a new solicitation, we're probably going to lose about twelve months. It's just the reality of it. And it's a council call.
Judy?
I really think that's what we have to do. I mean, there's just too many red flags for me. And the story upon story that I keep hearing, I think it's important that we do this right. And if that means trying to find somebody else and we lose time, then I think that's what has to happen. So, I'm going to vote no, too.
Well, first of all, I think that the first phase of this isn't necessarily directed to starting an RFP process for another provider. It's to get a better handle on our present situation, the, the services that are being provided. And this is kind of a specialized or narrow market. And it's like other things that you're doing. These people are involved with everybody, same way as we see in the cruise industry. So, I don't think that, that it necessarily is a detriment. I want to have, you know, a, a great contractor. And we can deal with the conflicts as it comes through. But I'm sure they have resources available to work with us on this. And if we can renegotiate, if we're going to negotiate this thing, we can come to a point within our agreement that says, there may be a conflict. We have all this information. We need to go out for somebody just to run the RFP portion. But I would be hesitant to just make an assumption at this point and then go out and maybe find a lesser contractor. I'm not entirely sure. But from everything that I read about these guys, and I did a little bit of research on them, they're, they're in the health market everywhere. I mean, you're not going to find them not working for, I mean, you look at just the stuff they've done in the Pacific Northwest with all the small hospitals and dealing with the larger hospitals. These guys are engaged in the service. And we're asking for a little bit of a specialized research here. So, I'm comfortable working with this operation to at least go through the negotiated part of it and see where we end up. We have the questions. We can ask Carl to ask them. I mean, that's pretty simple, I think. And to see where we can go with this thing. That's my, yes, Dick?
This one's a challenging one for me. I, I voted against it the last time because I'm concerned about the cost. You know, it's gone from whatever to now we're at two hundred thousand, maybe even more. I have no idea, which seems like a large amount of money to me. I am a little concerned about the, the potential conflict. I'm also, though, concerned about punting it for another year. I, I, and what I'm going to do now is probably, I guess, what I would normally do. But I think we should defer this until we have a full council. Because right now, two votes will kill it. And, you know, I don't think that's fair to the process. So...
I would support that idea. I would also like to see if, if the council is okay with it. Our own lobbyists said, if you guys want me to, I'll step down from Uber and Lyft. I'd like to see Carl ask Kevin Kennedy to step away from the Search contract.
Or from our contract.
Yeah.
So, if we defer to, and the questions we've had tonight, we could get those clarified, too, right? Possibly?
I can talk to ECG relative to Councilmember Isom's concern about asking Mr. Kennedy to step away from that. I can also have that conversation with Search tomorrow and say, this, this is a problem for us.
Because...
Not sure what they're going to do or say.
Because from what I've seen, just from what the work they did with SITCA, it was, you know, people were extremely happy. And, and to me, that speaks volumes.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I guess if we need to defer it, we can, just to get two other people's opinion on it. But, you know, about twice a week, I get more information just like this lady here did tonight. And we can't wait a year to start this all over again. And if we need to have the people playing the game with us or leading the game, and I'm sure they've got competent players that can do the same job. But we can't sit around here and wait. But anyway, I won't say anymore before I stick my foot in it. But I, I can, I can go along with it emotionally to defer for one meeting until they're here. But we've got to get it done. We've got to get started. And we can take players off the team to fit the game. I don't care who the players are, but we got to start. And we've got a good contractor.
I'm trying to get the answers and have a response to the council by the meeting of the seventeenth. But I absolutely agree with Councilmember Kuz. You've got to remember how long it's taken us to get to this point. You know, we spent a lot of time talking to a lot of people to try to identify firms. And it's, it's going to take at least twelve months if we start the process over again.
Your Honor, I move to defer this until the next meeting.
It's been moved?
Second.
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yeah.
Kifer?
Yes.
Okay. Carl, you pick a date to put that on when you're able to attend and get the questions asked. Is that correct?
I will have it for the meeting of the seventeenth. I will not be here, but Lacey can handle that easily.
Thank you. So, that moves us to...
I'm just deferring this.
That moves us to item A four, ordinance number nineteen dash eighteen eighty-seven, increasing water rates by six percent. First reading.
Your Honor, I move the city council approve a first reading, ordinance number nineteen dash eighteen eighty-seven, increasing water wastewater rates by six percent, establishing a date for a public hearing and providing for an effective date.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Dick? Anybody else?
We need to have that department pay for itself.
Thank you. So, please call the roll.
Gage?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yep.
Zingy?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes. In first reading, moves us to item seven B one, ordinance number nineteen dash one eight-eight-eight, increasing electrical rates by three and one-half percent. First reading. Without motion, please.
Your Honor?
Yes.
May the city council approve a first reading, ordinance number nineteen dash eighteen eighty-eight, increasing electric rates by three and one-half percent, establishing a date for a public hearing and providing an effective date.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Judy?
Nothing to add.
Anybody else? Please call the roll.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yep.
Zingy?
Yes.
That passes and brings us down to item seven B two, ordinance number nineteen one eight-eight-nine, increasing water rates except for seafood processors by five and one-half percent,
rates except for seafood processors by five and one half percent, increasing seafood water rates by 35% for reading.
Your Honor?
Yes, go ahead.
May the City Council approve a first reading ordinance number 191889, increasing the water rates except for seafood processors by five percent and one and a half, by five percent and one and a half percent, and increasing seafood processor rates 35%, establishing a date for a public hearing and providing an effective date.
The number is five and one half percent, right? Second? Then moved and seconded. Judy? Yeah, Carl, this 35% is the last of three.
That's correct.
Yeah. Yes.
I just had a question. Have we seen any conserving by the seafood processors since we raised it?
John, I'm going to defer to you. I want to say, John Kleiger, KPU water. Yes, as a surprisingly, the AC Phillips, who had been around 20% of our total production every year. Of course, we don't have the numbers for this year, but for 2017, rather than 20%, they were only 8%. Those are significant.
Yeah. I was curious. Thank you. That's good to hear.
Anybody else? Thank you, John. Please call the roll.
Kiefer?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yep.
Zingy?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
That passes, moves us on to item eight, vouchers, which we have none. And item nine is managers' report. Carl, what do you have for us?
I've got a couple. Mr. Mayor, I just want to remind the council that a week from tonight, you do have a special meeting. We will have Louis Ahemel from Bremello Ahemel here to talk about the work that his company is doing for us. On the agenda tonight, we did have the draft cruise schedule for 2019. Unless the council has comments, we intend to finalize that and get that out. I did want to advise the council later this month, we are intending to replace the manhole at the intersection of Front and Mission Street, which is going to necessitate us doing a bypass. And that bypass will be using a line that will traverse Front Street. So, that portion of Front Street then will become unavailable to traffic. We are going to be routing southbound traffic by making Dock two-way for that period of time and removing the parking on Dock. The other alternative was to try to funnel traffic over the port. I've got concerns about weight issues with some of the larger transport vehicles in town and we think this is the easiest way to accomplish that. So, I just want to give you a heads up.
How long is it going to be?
About a week. We want to get this done before CCON starts resuming their work. So, it's really being driven by that because you don't want both projects going concurrently.
And that's in February, right?
Yeah, tie things up. Mr. Cushing did have a memo just for the record on the broadcast surcharge fee increase. This is a problem that we are going to continually be up against as the providers are just escalating the cost of content and, you know, we're one of all the providers or cable providers and not cable, content providers in the country that are up against this problem. And then lastly, I just wanted to note that, again, I'm very happy that our former executive assistant Rebecca Brown is returning to the city organization as the new outreach librarian and I think she'll do an excellent job in that, in that job. That's all I've got.
Any questions? Thank you. City clerk's file?
No.
City attorney's file?
No, your Honor.
Future agenda items.
I have one I want to ask as regarding if we could look at, since we're already raising rates, if we can look at possibly what it would be to raise our tax cap, what it would take to do that with the borough. I know that they did it in 2016, but, looking at that, but then also looking at keeping the residential rent rates at the low 500.
I can bring that back for a discussion item by the council relative to an increase in the tax cap. Do you want it targeted? Do you want exemptions for things like rent, for fuel, that type of thing? And if the council reaches a consensus, then it really has to go to cooperative relations because we can't do it independently of the borough and the borough can't do it independently of us. It's got to be done jointly.
I just think it's time to have that conversation so that, you know.
Certainly can bring that back for a discussion item.
In regards to information, can you kind of see what's happening in the rest of Southeast in regard to caps?
Well, in Sitka, they raised theirs to 12,000, their cap. So, that's, I mean, people are doing it.
I think this wasn't, this was discussed not too long ago at Cooperative Relations and Borough Finance Record put a pretty thorough packet together about what other communities were doing. So, I'll see if we can get that.
Thank you. And so, it brings us down to Mayor and Councilwoman Dick.
Nothing, your Honor.
Kentley?
Happy New Year.
Nothing, your Honor.
Carl and I had an opportunity to meet with our representative and our senator, had a very good discussion with them, fairly general stuff in regards to what they're looking forward to this year and the challenges that the state may have. We emphasized some of the concerns that we have in regards to different items that affect the communities. And I think the conversation went very well and we're looking forward to Burt being in the majority in the Senate and hopefully Dan Lam in the majority on one side or the other and we work best for the district and the state of Alaska. I understand we had a fairly safe and good New Year in regards to, you know, the celebrations and stuff and I'm glad to see that. And I'd like to thank all the council members for their help through the budget last year and we're looking forward to getting some of that stuff in place. Brings us down to our executive sessions, item 15. The first one is a general government request for an executive session to review and discuss Cruise Line International Association Alaska and Cruise Line International Association versus the city and borough of Juneau, Alaska, a municipal corporation and Rory Watt in his official capacity as city manager. We have a motion.
Your Honor, I move the City Council to declare that consistent with the city manager's memorandum dated December 24th, 2018, it is in the best interest of the city to discuss Judge H. Russell Hollands' December 6th, 2018 ruling in the matter of Cruise Lines International Association Alaska and Cruise Lines International Association versus the city and borough of Juneau, Alaska, a municipal corporation and Rory Watt in his official capacity as city manager, case number 1, colon, 16, dash, C V, dash, 008, dash, H R H, capitalized, in executive session. In accordance with that finding, the City Council go into executive session in accordance with the Ketchikan Municipal Code 2.04.025A3 to discuss said decision and the auxiliary items described in the city manager's memorandum dated December 24th, 2018, which matters involve receiving legal advice with the, with the, within, should be one word, the attorney-client privilege.
Do I have a second? Then moved and seconded. Discussion?
Shorter.
Please short.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Kiefer?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Carl, we recess and go to executive session. And reconvene. We met in the executive session. We have a recommended motion. We have a motion, please.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move, I move the City Council to direct the city manager to advise the city and borough of Juneau of the city of Ketchikan's intent to take such action in an appeal of Judge H. Russell Hollands' December 6th, 2018 ruling in the matter of Cruise Line International Association Alaska and Cruise Lines International Association versus the city and borough of Juneau, Alaska, a municipal corporation and Rory Watt in his official capacity as city manager, case number 116C V 0008, dash, H R H, including but not limited to the filing of an amicus briefs and funding of a portion of the legal cost of said appeal in an initial amount not to exceed 100,000 and authorize the city manager to transfer 100,000 from the 2019 appropriated reserves of the general fund to the city attorney's legal and accounting services account, account number 640, dash, 01, in support of said appeal.
Second. Then moved and seconded. Kentley?
I, I'm just, I think we need to support our Southeast communities and as we were talking in AML this year, we as Southeast communities need to start working together to be more supportive of each other within our cruise lines and so that we are, we're in control of our communities and our tourism industry and not being controlled by our resources.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please call the roll.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kiefer?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We're going to change it up a little bit and move on to item B1, request for an executive session, review and discuss the competitive strategies associated with telecommunications division products and services. We have a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the City Council declare that consistent with the general manager's memorandum dated December 24th, 2018, it is in the best interest of the city to review and discuss competitive strategies associated with telecommunications division products and services in executive session in accordance with KMC Section 2.04.025A1 in order to discuss subjects the immediate knowledge of which could clearly have an adverse effect on the finances of the city.
We'll be in seconded. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Kiefer?
No.
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
All right, that passes. We will recess again. Session. We met in executive session, discussed the items in the game management directive. That brings us down to item 15A2, request for an executive session, annual evaluation of city manager KPU general manager. We have a motion.
Your Honor, I move that the City Council declare that consistent with general managers, oh, no, sorry, I'm in front. Sorry about that. We're on executive session. Is there some of you here? Finding the correct one.
Your Honor?
Go ahead, some more.
I move the City Council go into executive session in accordance with the Ketchikan Municipal Code 2.04.025A2 for the purpose of conducting the annual evaluation of the city manager, KPU slash KPU general manager, which may involve discussion of subjects that tend to prejudice the reputation and character of any person provided. The person may request a public discussion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Carl, you want to hold this in the executive session?
I wouldn't, Mr. Mayor.
All right, please call the roll.
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Kiefer?
Yes.
All right. We'll come out of the next session, reconvene. We sat down, we discussed the, with the manager, the evaluation and we'll go further as we go down the road here and have another executive session to confirm things up. So, we've already done all the council member comments. That brings us to Dave's favor.